Good evening and welcome to the July 11th organizational meeting for Bethlehem Central School District. I want to just note that, obviously, I don't have a name plaque, but I'm Brittany Barrett, the district clerk. I'm going to start this meeting off tonight before we have your guys as officers. Prior to this 7:18 start time, the board was in an executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters. At this time in the agenda, would you please stand for pledge allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's start with introductions next. Catherine. Dave.
Willow Bear.
John Walston.
Judy Kehoe.
Robert Tejan.
Christine Beck.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jody Monroe.
All right, at this point in the agenda is the appointment of district officers' action items. It is recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education for the following appointment of officers' action items, one through six. So move.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Brittany?
Yeah?
I have seven items on my agenda.
Let me say that again, and I'll edit that. It is recommended that the, by the superintendent of the Board of Education approve the following appointment of officers' action items, one through seven.
So move.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? One of those was the swearing in of the district clerk, well, district clerk including myself, so I need to be sworn in. And Judy Kehoe always does this for me so kindly.
Oh, and give me what I can say. Repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of district clerk.
The duties of the office of district clerk.
Congratulations. And thank you.
Thank you. All right, and the next point of order for tonight is appointing our newly elected board members, which we have two of you tonight. So just going to go in alphabetical order, but Robert Tejan, both of your terms are three-year terms, so they start on July 1, and the end June 30, 2025. So we can do our oath from afar if you'd like, or whatever you're comfortable with.
Wherever you'd like me.
Just stand aside. All right, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of Board of Education member.
The duties of the office of Board of Education member.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
John Walston. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of Board of Education member.
The duties of the office of Board of Education member.
Good job, thank you. Okay, and the next order of business is swearing of the superintendent. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of superintendent.
The duties of the office of superintendent.
All right, item 5A, at this point, we're going to complete the election of officers for the 2022-2023 school year. At this point, I will open up the floor for any nominations for board president.
I can nominate Holly Dellenbaugh for president.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Any other nominations for this position? Okay. Holly, do you accept the board's nomination for this role?
Yes, I would be honored to serve in this capacity.
All right, so at this point, nominations be closed. I have Holly Dellenbaugh for Board of Education President for the 22-23 school year. Do you want to say anything before anyone takes a vote?
No, just, again, I would be honored to do it again, and I can only hope that it will be what is a more normal school year than we have had in the past several years. That'd be great.
Okay, so at this point, we have a first and a second. Can I take a vote to appoint Holly as board president this time? Everyone, anyone in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes, Holly, you may assume your seat.
Can I stay here?
Yeah, you can sit right where you are.
Do you need to swear me in, I think?
Yes, I'll come over and do that.
Okay.
And I'll give you some of my cheat sheets in case you need them.
I do.
So again, at this point, we're going to give you the oath of office. All right, so at this point, will be your oath, I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education president.
Of Board of Education president.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly. You're welcome, Holly. At this point, I would request any nominations for the position of Board Vice President for the 2022-2023 school year.
I would nominate Christine Beck to retake her role as vice president. You guys worked really well together, and I think we're successful partners.
I would agree, and I would pull second for nomination. Would you accept the nomination? I would, okay. Do we have any other nominations for Board Vice President? Hearing none, nominations are closed. If we can take an official vote on the nomination of Christine Beck for Board of Education Vice President, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes, congratulations, Christine.
I have to
No, you did, go stand up. You repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of Board of Education Vice President.
The duty, repeat that one, okay?
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office, thank you.
Of Board of Education Vice President.
Of Board of Education Vice President. It is a tongue twister, isn't it?
It is. Moving down the list, the next item on our agenda, item six, is a selection of Board of Education members for our standing committees. And normally, we start by taking some volunteers. Do I have anybody who would like to serve on the audit committee?
I would love to. I'll do it again.
Okay. So I have Christine, and Willow
And John?
And would you like to, John?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you.
That would be fabulous. Thank you very much. We also need to designate next a board member as liaison to the BCCF Board of Trustees. I would be willing to do that if no one else is keen.
I'm willing to do it also, Holly. I don't know if you plan on being on the policy committee again, which is very time consuming, so.
I mean, if you would like to, I'm happy to.
Show up for the ratings.
Happy to let you do that one. All right, we'll let, save that to Willow. We need somebody for the BC TA, don't laugh, the BC TA Process Committee.
Did they meet last year?
No, they did not meet last year. Would you like to do that?
So I knew we could get more volunteers.
I'm happy to be on that committee as well.
What was that, my name?
Bob, and myself. We also have a BC UEA Process Committee.
Which did not meet as well.
Which, Catherine, would you like to be on that one?
I'm happy, I would be honored, thank you.
Okay, do we have another volunteer? Maybe Meredith would like to be on that one.
I'm sure she would. Certain of it.
Another committee that doesn't mean, she would love to, she'd love that one.
Then, so we have the, the next item, it says, is the District Equity and Inclusivity Committee, but we will, we're going to take that Just do it as a district committee. We'll just take that off, we're going to do it as a district committee, and we will figure out board members to attend to that. Then we have our Facilities Committee.
I would like to do that.
I'll do it.
All right, hold on, I saw, I thought I saw a third hand.
I'll do that.
Bob, you'd like to do that one too? Fabulous.
That actually meets, right?
It does, and we have a bond, so we'll meet more often this year.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So that's Bob, John, and Christine. And then we have the Policy Committee, which I would be, I would like to continue serving on.
May as well.
And it is great to have a third person on there as well, so if nobody, I think Meredith might also be interested in that one as well.
She was on the floor, wasn't she?
I know you're doing audit and facility, like, those are two big committees.
I can do it if you absolutely need me to do it, so you can Ask Meredith.
Why don't I float it by Meredith, and if she's not able to, then we'll circle back.
Put me right in there.
If that sounds good to everybody? Okay. All right. Moving on to number seven, our other annual appointments and designations. First A, our 2022-2023 annual district appointments. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following other appointment action items, one through 16.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. B. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following annual contractual action items, one and two.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask a process question?
Mm-hmm.
The records retention? Why is this one a resolution and not a, like, a policy? I'm just wondering. Or I could get, I could do some research on that and come back, but I
It is a policy we follow, but records retain.
I guess I'm just, it's
This is incorporated by reference
Okay.
within the records retention policy.
Thank you. I was wondering how they related. Thank you very much, and sorry to interrupt the process.
No.
If somebody seconded.
I think so, I think we have a second.
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. C, 2022-2023 annual designations. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following designation, action items, one through three.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. D, 2022-2023 annual authorizations. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following authorization, action items, one through six.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, again, sorry. I'm just wondering, maybe this, this, I have no objections to this whatsoever, I'm just wondering if in the future a petty cash fund of $100 goes far enough in these positions, it's not what it once was, so I raise that for consideration for next year, but no objections for this year.
Judy, did you want to comment on that at this point?
It's used very infrequently
Oh, good.
because of the district credit card, and these days, everybody accepts credit cards, so it's not an issue.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. E, bonding of personnel. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of bonding of personnel, action items, one through three.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. Eight, our annual policy review. First, A, public hearing on the code of conduct. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed revised code of conduct as required by the education law. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments either for or against on the proposed policy. If you come forward, I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks. Seeing no members of the public that wish to speak, I am going to close the public hearing on the code of conduct. B, our annual policy approvals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy action items, one through two.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. Nine, approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the June 15, 2022, regular board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. And 10, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Sure.
I'm actually going to turn it over to Judy Kehoe to provide an update on the bus sales.
So during the budget process, we had talked about the circling of 30 buses. And at that time, we had discussed that we were going to sell 20 of the large buses and 10 of the small buses. So as Corinne Johnson, our Director of Transportation, was meeting with the fleet supervisor, they determined that they wished to slightly modify that mix of buses that are being disposed. They felt that they needed to have enough small buses available as spares. So they have recommended that instead of 20 large buses, we sell 24 large buses, and then reduce the number of small buses sold from 10 down to 6. So this is their updated recommendation. Again, it doesn't change the total buses within the fleet. It still drops us down to 100 buses, which is adequate for the anticipated routes in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Please share our ongoing thanks for all of the bus wrangling.
Will do.
And aside from just an update on hiring, we are almost finished with our hiring for the fall, hopefully. We've got a couple positions that are still outstanding, so hopefully we'll have those wrapped up for August for appointment. And that's my report. And I did see that there was a, an email that went out to families to opt into or to, or to make changes if needed to their bus participation.
We're not, right, we're not doing the opt-in this year.
But that didn't really work. Yeah, but like going in and make, yeah, seeing if it said that you needed a bus or not.
Right.
So just to flag, you know, we can hopefully use that information to get a better idea of, you know, busing needs.
We can route most efficiently when we know who's planning to take the bus.
Who's planning to, yes.
That's our request. Parents can change their request during the year at any point with a simple phone call to transportation. So it's not an irrevocable option by many means, so we do encourage people to accurately record that.
Next up is the board report. First, I just wanted to welcome our two new board members. It's great to have you on board.
Oh, jet lag, Holly.
A little crunchy. And second, I just wanted to, and we haven't had a meeting since graduation, and I just wanted to congratulate all of our 2022 graduates, and to say thank you for all of the people that put the graduation ceremony together, because I know that that's a lot of work. And it always seems like it goes off very smoothly, so a thank you to all of the administrative personnel and teachers and everybody who made that happen. Anybody have anything else that they would like to?
Just to congratulate the class of 2022, it's always great to see the kids at graduation, see where they're going to school. And also for the administration putting on the staff breakfast that you myself Comfortably there? No, you weren't there. And Meredith was there. It's nice to see the faculty all get together and staff and enjoy that celebration, and I think, Jody, it was put together rather quickly. So I think that everybody appreciated that, so thank you. And that's it. I look forward to year number nine on the board and all the good times we have.
All right, so next on our agenda, item 11, is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Just a reminder that presentations should be as brief as possible, and in public session, the board does not permit discussion of individual district personnel. And I think I said state your name.
Thank you. My name is David DiCancio, resident, also a parent of two daughters, a long time, about eight years, a BOU board member. I want to start off by saying, John Lewis once said, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up." You have to say something. You have to do something. You have all received emails, and I trust you have done your due diligence, and know that myself and several others have been struggling for months to get answers about the process, the policies, and actions taken to prevent, to protect the well-being of our B C students. While being ranked number one always makes everyone feel good, generates great press, great Facebook posts, I think if you ask all the parents, they would all agree that our children's mental health is more important than anything. Just last year, the American Academy of Pediatrics and others declared that the growing children's mental health crisis is a national emergency. Acknowledging the problem is the first step. Taking action to create a healthy and positive atmosphere for our children is a must. Isn't that what we all want? Isn't that what our children deserve? That begins with transparency. Transparency is vital to ensuring trust and establishing accountability by those who are responsible for creating that healthy and positive atmosphere of our children so rightfully deserve. I assume you would agree that transparency is a responsibility of our public officials, such as yourselves, especially the ones who took an oath today for the first time. Therefore, I hope you will honor that responsibility of transparency and hold off on taking any action tonight that is related to a recent investigation until the said report is made available, at the very least, to the complainants. Now, doing the right thing is never easy. But if you stand by this report, why deny it to the aggrieved parties? The opportunity, why deny them the aggrieved parties the opportunity to read the report before you take a vote? I requested it, I was denied. I then have foiled, since then, I made a foil request, I was told I should expect something by July 29. If you stand by this report, which was considered when adding an agenda item for tonight, then do the right thing. First, take a vote to accept said report. As a parent, I hope you will do the right thing and show the brave student athletes that the respect they deserve for stepping forward and delaying tonight's vote until the report is made available to them and their families. I would also like to point out that being denied access to the report places an undue burden on the complainants by hindering their ability to seek a proper appeal. It's the right thing to do, I hope you will do the right thing. Make no mistake, your action tonight will have a lasting impact on those very students, their families, and the community at large. You know, I don't want to get too much into specifics, but should actually be taken tonight, I will want, I will call for an immediate investigation of the entire athletic department. If up to 40% of teen parents have expressed a concern, something is not right. One or two is one thing, 40%. I've spoken to others around the area in the field, they're all astonished by this number. For the past eight years, I have proudly served as a board member of BOU. As you all know, BOU is made up of an amazing group of volunteers whose mission is to help our teens and tweens thrive. Over the years, at the request of the school district, we have hosted numerous Talking With Your Teens, focusing on mental well-being and other related topics. We've awarded thousands of dollars in grant money to support school initiatives such as the Beautiful Me program. The Beautiful Me program was designed to enhance self-esteem, increase positive body awareness, improve problem solving, and to help build healthy relationship skills for women and girls of all ages. Well, like John Lewis once said, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up." You have to say something, you have to, you have to do something. Well, I've said something, now I'm going to do something. Sadly, after much thought, I no longer believe I can in good conscience continue to serve on BOU's board. Therefore, I'll be submitting my resignation because of the action taken by this district on this matter and several others that you are all made fully aware of. It's sad, it's painful, and I just want to leave you with these last words, because, you know, words are important, but actions are more important. I'd like to quote our superintendent, Jody Monroe, as reported by News 6 on July 2, 2020. Superintendent of Bethlehem School District says, "When young people speak up in such personal and painful ways, we must believe them." Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 12, action items, A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, finance action items, one through nine.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes. Item B, professional personnel action items.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to isolate out item number 18, Coach Don Austin, from the appointment list.
Let's do it this way. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, professional personnel action items, one through 17, 18, with the exception of Coach Don Austin, and 19, and 20. 18 with the exception of Coach Dawn Austin, and 19, and 20.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
What is, what is the impact of that?
It, so what we're going to do is we'll just vote on everything else first, and then we'll come back and have a, a vote on that particular individual. So it just breaks it, and the point of order just breaks it into two steps, essentially. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes.
So do we just vote on the point of order or on the?
And then, we need to vote on. It is recommended by, that the Board of Education approve the following: Professional Personnel Action Item, 18 specifically appointing Coach Dawn Austin.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I don't agree with the appointment. Listen to students.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? That passes. C, Support Personnel Actions. It's number 14. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Support Staff Action Items 1 through 24.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. And I just want to point out that item 14, we have with us tonight John McPhillips, who will be filling Judy Kehoe's position when she retires. John, if you wanted to say hi to everybody or say a couple words?
Sure. Feels a little bit like Prime Minister's question. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the Superintendent of the Board of Education for this fantastic and unique opportunity. Congratulations to the two new board members. And I thank my wife and family for, for their support and my daughter for letting me to, letting me accept the position who's a high schooler here, although I think she's shaking me down for rides to and from school since we're coming to the same place. So really look forward to, to working with each of you individually and collectively. Wanted to also extend a note of thanks to the interview committee. I know there was a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of resources for this important position. And looking forward to getting started in October, I know that's a few weeks away. I'd like to give me some time to sort of downshift from my, from my current position, make sure that they have at least a budget that's workable for their upcoming fiscal year so I can jump into a school fiscal year. Budgets never stop, so thank you all, and I look forward to working in the future.
Thank you.
Welcome, John.
Congratulations.
And one last bus rider, I heard.
Allow that form.
And now I can officially say hi to you at ice cream.
That's right.
There you go. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Action Items 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
I had a question, let me just see the third list. No, my question was on something we already approved, so I'll ask you later.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? I lose a bunch of policies on it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. 13, Recognition of Public Comment on a Non-Agenda Item. If we have any visitors who would like to address an item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to come to the microphone.
Well, David DiCancio back again. As I stated before, I would like to officially call for an immediate investigation of the entire athletic department, because once again, for this district to take action when 40% of teen's parents step forward to talk about mental health, mental abuse, something's not right. And for you to just take action and think it's okay and sweep it under the carpet is not right. The devastation done to these girls since September to today, things were happening during, ahead of, there were emails being sent, which you guys have all seen, that basically violating, restraining an order of not contacting students. It was violated. Is that, clearly your vote says it was okay. So therefore, I want an immediate investigation of the entire athletic department. And I'd like to know when that, when that can expect that. Our kids deserve better. You know, a lot of people talked about on the, on, on, on the road here, that mental health is a top issue. Mental well-being of our children is important. The actions you just took speak otherwise. Actions speak louder than words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, item 14, Future Meetings and Events. On our board calendar, our next meeting is Wednesday, August 10th. The topic is going to be setting the tax rate, I believe. And the regular board meeting at 7:00, but anticipating executive session starting at 6:00. And then the meeting after that is on Wednesday, September 7th, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and the rest of the meeting starting at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope, meeting adjourned.